Welcome to the Who's Left Podcast, a show about Indiana politics, history and culture from the unapologetic perspective of the Hoosier left. My name is Scott Aaron Rodgers and I'm recording from Bloomington. Today's guest is Bloomington City Councilwoman for District Six, Sydney Zulich. On January first of this year, Sydney was sworn in as the youngest person to ever serve on the council in the city's history, having won her election last November just days after turning twenty-one. In today's conversation, we'll talk about what brought Zulich to Bloomington, her early political awakening, heroes and inspirations, and being taken seriously despite her age. We'll review her first few months on the council, engaging with Bloomington's student population, and her vision for the future of the city. Finally, we'll talk about Gen Z's political motivations, the roadblocks standing in their way, and what our current crop of leaders can do to help cultivate the next generation. But first, the pitch. If you find value in conversations like these, I could really use your help. In a media environment filled with bland both-sides lazy journalism at its best and blatant right-wing propaganda at its worst, Indiana needs independent left-wing media to inform Hoosiers about what's really going on in our state. My work is dedicated to calling out the Republican supermajority, their financial backers, and others in their network that actively work to make Hoosier lives worse, those whose policies endanger our children through lax gun regulation, bullying queer youth, and poisoning our environment. I work to highlight these bad actors so we can replace them with more empathetic leadership and also shine the spotlight on the Hoosier activists, organizations, and elected officials who are doing the hard work to build a more just, equitable, and compassionate Indiana for the next generation of Hoosiers. But I'll take on Democrats too, when they put their donors over their voters, when they talk out of both sides of their mouth, and when they fail to push back against GOP authoritarian extremism with the necessary urgency and tenacity. I am driven to provide information and analysis you won't get anywhere else in Indiana, but I can't do it without you. I'm not motivated by the dollars, but everything costs money: web hosting, equipment, editing software, travel to meet with other activists and organizers. I need your financial support with a paid subscription over at scottaronrogers.substack.com. For five dollars a month, or fifty dollars a year, you can help me push our state in a better direction and help feed my family in the process. Have you seen a teenager eat? My god! And look, if you can't afford it at this time, you can still help. Subscribe at the free level over on Substack. Set your favorite podcast player to auto-download new episodes of the show. Rate and review the show on whatever platform you use. Follow me on social media at facebook.com/who'sleft, that's H-O-O-S-left. I'm also on Blue Sky at the same handle. Personally, I'm at scottrog78, that's S-C-O-T-T-R-O-G-seven-eight, on Instagram, Threads, and Twitter, and on Mastodon at scottrog78@hoosier.social. I'm now posting video too. Full episodes on YouTube and clips on TikTok. The handle on both of those is @who'sleft. Please, subscribe. But most importantly, share our message. Forward the articles to friends, family, and colleagues. Don't just like, but share on social media. Go tell it on the mountain. With your investment, a full-time Who's Left looks like new content every day: full coverage of the 2024 election cycle in Indiana and beyond, and it looks like zooming out to see how the network's acting in our state function nationally and even globally. It might not be in my financial interest, but I do not plan on paywalling any content because I believe in open access to information, and your support helps make that content freely available to all Hoosiers. But I desperately need your investment in order to keep bringing you this meaningful content. To those who have contributed already, I thank you from the bottom of my heart. I appreciate every penny, and it means the world to me and to everybody. Thanks for listening. Now here's my interview with Sydney Zulich. Sydney Zulich, welcome to the Who's Left Podcast.
Hello, thank you for having me.
Oh, thanks for joining me. I really appreciate your time. So, um, I would say, first of all, introduce yourself to the listeners. Uh, you know, tell us where you're from, what brought you to Bloomington, and how you came to be Bloomington's youngest ever city councilperson.
Okay, yes, so my name is Sydney Zulich. Um, it's spelled Zulich. Please go with me here and pronounce it Zulich for anyone who's confused. Uh, I was born in Texas, I was raised in Ohio, but my dad is from Valparaiso, which led him to go to IU and also led him to take me to IU to tour. Um, and so I applied to seven colleges during my senior year of high school, and IU had the best international law program. And so that is what I studied, along with Russian, in college, and I graduated last May.
Just last May?
Yes, just last May, um, at which point I was... I had a couple years of political campaigning under my belt for different candidates. And there was an opening, um, for a whole host of reasons. There was an opening in the District Six candidacy for the Democratic Party, and I was already working on Esack's, or Councilmember Esack Casari's, um, City Council-at-Large race. And, you know, I didn't have anything lined up after college, which is something that I want to talk about how difficult it is for recent grads to find jobs.
Oh, yeah.
Actually, in Bloomington. Um, but I didn't have a job lined up, and so I wasn't really sure where I was gonna live. And in approximately early April, um, a couple people, including Esack and several other people on his campaign, kind of came to me and they were like, you know, "We really think that you should run. We really want this seat to be filled by someone who is young, who understands the Bloomington political climate in the way that you do, and someone who has worked to understand the Bloomington constituent base." Um, so in 2022 and 2023, um, I think I knocked over 5,000 doors across Bloomington.
Wow.
And Monroe County. Um, not everything I was doing was specifically Bloomington-based, but, um, you know, I talked to a lot of voters, I understood where people were at in terms of county and city issues, even if, you know, when you're working a state-house race, people still want to talk to you about county and city issues.
Sure.
That's the thing that they face on a more daily basis, and so I felt like I had a really unique understanding of the, not even just the voter base, but all of the city of Bloomington. And during my campaign, I went to go talk to all of the people that I hadn't gotten to talk to, which is the more difficult places to get into, which are apartment complexes and IU dorms. Um, so that was a big project. I think I am the first politician, candidate, public servant in recent history to be able to get into the dorms. Um, and we knocked, I don't want to say every dorm, because I think we might have missed one due to like a lack of access or something, but, um, we knocked over thirty-five-hundred doors for my campaign when I was uncontested, and so that was nice just to be able to make myself really accessible to my constituents in particular.
Yeah, well, I want to ask about that, um, because you said you were uncontested, and you still knocked on all those doors. You didn't have to do that.
Yes.
And I think that's a kind of, you know, a testament to, uh, the kind of representative that you're gonna be.
Thank you. I think... It's, uh, it's hard because, like, as a young woman, like, finding the guts to toot your own horn is hard, especially when you're in a space where everyone is at least fifteen years older than you, um, to look back and say, "Yeah, I did do that, and I'm proud of myself for doing that, and nobody else was doing that." Um, it was nice. I actually won an award for it with the Democratic Party. I won, along with the College Dems, most of whom were on my campaign or helped me out in some way to talk to voters. Um, we won an award together for a party building. And it was amazing. Like, I think, you know, fieldwork is my favorite thing to do on campaigns, and so it was fun, and it was also an honor to be able to knock on all these people's doors and be like, "I get to make decisions for you. Um, I'd like to know how you'd like me to make those decisions." And, you know, it's kind of difficult because in those two or three months before the election, the majority of my constituents are students, and they're freshmen, and they've lived in Bloomington for some total of like thirty-five days. Um, in the beginning of what I started advancing, there's, um, there's about a month and a half, I believe it's six weeks, that you're allowed to be in dorms every semester, and it's the six weeks immediately before early voting starts.
Mm-hmm.
And so what that kind of did was put me in a weird position where I'm asking these people who have lived in Bloomington for like forty days, what they'd like to change, and they're like, "Uh, I've been an adult for maybe six months, and this is, I'm living by myself." Um, and they're all like so smart, but they probably haven't really been off of campus yet, and there are a lot of things that is not widely known, but, you know, I do not have jurisdiction over any university, uh, property. And so it's like, there's a lot of things that I'm like, "I can't help you with that. I can advocate for you with school, but this is not something that I can single-handedly fix for you." Um, so that's been tough, but...
Yeah, but it, well, I mean, I guess, still, it's like, "Well, hey, you're gonna be my constituent, whether you like it or not. I'd like your input." You know, that's, um, I, I, that's the kind of outreach I like to see. Um, that is, that is how representative democracy should work.
Yeah.
So, um, as someone who is, you know, uh, who ran for office before you could even sit down and have a drink with like your constituents, um, I bet you had an early political wake, uh, awakening. Did you start at, at high school doing stuff, before that even?
Um, I would say high school. So I was a freshman, um, at Arlington-Kilborn High School in Columbus, Ohio, when, during 2016.
Hmm.
Um, so for anyone who remembers, very emotional year, very difficult, um, did not go how any of us thought it was going to go. Um, I had always been tangentially interested in politics, you know, when I was six. Like, when people asked, I was of the president, um, category of "Who do you want to be when you grow up?" Um, that sounds like a lot of work. And I, I really like being on city council, but I'm not sure I have, uh, that specific, uh, ambition in me anymore. Um, but, so I got involved about three months after the 2016 election in an organization called the Junior State of America. Not political inherently, it's actually a nonpartisan organization. It's a nonprofit, um, but it's dedicated to, number one, enabling students to create their own, like, political engagement and civic engagement. So it's completely student-run from the nation down. Um, so it's, it's a national nonpartisan organization, and there are different states, and so there's school chapters and, and states, and I was on the state board for convention. In the convention department, I was eventually the convention coordinator. Um, but what it does is there are debates and there are thought talks about different issues that are going on across the country and, and how to best solve them. And so there are, like, you know, there are Republicans, there are Libertarians, there are Democrats, um, but the goal was to learn more. And so during debates, there would be a vote in the beginning and a vote at the end of every debate to kind of say, like, "What did we learn? Like, do we think that the arguments were good enough that our minds were changed?" And so I was very much raised in like a, "You need to have an open perspective." And even if, like, you go into a city council meeting or a congressional hearing with a notion of how you're gonna vote, be firm in your beliefs but flexible enough that you can change them with new information. Um, so that is the type of person that I've always aspired to be. Um, and then that club, actually, I was in engineering, I was in STEM in high school. Um, so that club was kind of my awakening, where I was like, "This is really something different that I want to do. I want to go be a lawyer." Um, and I'm not going to law school yet, that sounds, I need a little debrief from academics. My three years at IU was very intense. Uh, I had a great time, but it was intense.
Yeah.
And, yeah, and I got involved on Esack's campaign for Congress, and then, um, a woman on that campaign, her name is Chrissy Gale, who is now the, uh, Regional Organizing Director for the Indiana Democratic Party, um, kind of mentored me through that, and, uh, we've been very close ever since, and I've kind of followed her to different political campaigns, and then, uh, she helped me with mine.
It's fantastic, okay. Um, so locally, um, you know, we sort of see who your maybe political inspirations are, right? But, um, you know, like, who, I assume you're a student of the craft, like, who is your, uh, historical inspiration? And then maybe, uh, a prominent politician, uh, currently that you model yourself after, sort of?
Hmm. Always tough to like say who, like, my historical inspiration was, just because, like, especially politicians, like, there are a lot of things that came out about ways that people have behaved that I'm not super proud of, wouldn't want to, wouldn't want to say that I wouldn't want to be, like, most of them. I would say Lee Hamilton. Um, I graduated from the Hamilton-Luger School. Um, I, I think that, you know, obviously, the Bloomington City Council is very different from Congress. But, but I think he really inspires me to work across, not the aisle, but the different factions the Democrats are in in Bloomington and say, you know, either we're all Americans or we're all Bloomingtonians or we're all Democrats here. Um, we have different ideas on how to get there, but we really have the best interest in Bloomington. Um, and so I really respect the way that Senator Luger and Congressman Hamilton interact with each other. Um, so that's, and Barron Hill.
Mm-hmm.
Also a former Indiana nine representative.
Yeah.
And then today, I will say, the thing that really, really started inspiring me to think about my own career is, um, in 2022, during the summer, I was in Europe, and I was very closely paying attention to a lot of different primaries. Um, and Maxwell Frost was running in Florida, and Raymond Reed, who ultimately lost his primary, was running, I believe, in St. Louis, Missouri. And immediately, even though I had no money, because I was in Europe spending money like crazy, I donated to both of their campaigns, and I kept a very close watch on them. And, you know, I know a little bit less about what Raymond Reed is up to, but Maxwell Frost is killing it in...
Mm-hmm, yeah, he's just a great job.
Um, so those are who I aspire to be like, and just finding a really great balance of learning how to compromise, knowing when to compromise and when to not, and also standing very, very firm in my beliefs. You know, I would identify as a leftist. Um, there are a lot of people who are turned off by that term. Um, I wouldn't say that I'm a progressive just because I think that word is so overused, especially in Bloomington, like, nobody really knows what it means anymore, and it means different things to different people. So I would say that I'm a leftist, um, which is more left than I think most people would place themselves.
Uh, right, well, but, but yet, you listed Lee Hamilton, Dick Luger, Barron Hill, like a lot of, a lot of centrists, like consensus builders.
Yes.
And, yeah, and I, I think that's, yeah, yeah, no, it's, it's, it's important, like you said, to, you know, you come to your, to the table with your values, right? And you have leftist values, but, um, still, we all have to live together and, you know, do, you know, come to some sort of agreement, and that's, yeah, theoretically, hopefully.
Hopefully. Um, so I'm a leftist and I'm also a realist, and those things clash a lot. Um, so there were a lot of times, like, like, with the unhoused population.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Do I think that there's dignity in living in a tent? No, I do not. Do I recognize that Bloomington does not currently have the resources to put everyone in a housing unit? And that tent are best option to immediately relieve an issue, to make sure that people have semblance of privacy, to make sure that they know that there's a safe place to sleep at night. Um, like, no, nobody want, like, that is not the end goal for anybody, but recognizing that that's where we can get the fastest is also something that I'm, I'm trying to be aware of.
Yeah, and well, I could dig into a whole, we could do a whole episode on homelessness.
Come back.
Um, and I would, I would love to, but, um, well, so, I guess, I don't want to roll back to the campaign necessarily, but in, in, in general, between the campaign and just being, uh, involved, you know, now you're on the council, and you've got colleagues and like, do, do you have a hard time being taken seriously? Do you find that people are like dismissive sometimes because of your age?
Ugh, the public is not gonna like this response. Of course, I would say members of the public way more than my fellow city councilors. Um, I rarely get spoken down to on council. There's a lot of times constituents and, and other members of, or other residents of Bloomington are like, "You just don't get it. Like, you're just not old enough to understand." Um, and I'm kind of like, "Well, I'm one of nine votes, so either explain it to me in a nice way, or like, I guess I just won't get it." Um, which, it, it's kind of insulting because I am, I do try to be very methodical about how I make decisions and knowledgeable and unwilling to admit when I don't know something, which I think is a skill that not everyone has.
It is a super, uh, undervalued quality, yeah.
Um, and now, not always, there are some times where I get crazy imposter syndrome, and I try to act like I do know what's going on, and I think we're all guilty of that sometimes, but I could, especially when I'm like making a vote, I try to say like, "I'm not really sure about this one. Can you elaborate more?" Um, which I hope people respect. Um, I think people would kind of hate me if I came in at twenty-one years old and been like, "Well, I know everything, so..."
Yeah, right.
Um, but no, I, I have like very different perspectives from a lot of the council members, and so, and a lot of times I am listened to, and, and some of it is kind of like identity politics. I'm like, "Yeah, I was a student really recently." Yes, I do, I do deal with, you know, all of these issues, renting, you know, living near campus, living on a, on a block that has no sidewalks. Um, and so I kind of, the city councilors have been very respectful. Um, and...
Yeah, that's good.
Yeah, it's, yes. It's the expectation that we should have, and I am also grateful because I think that them being respectful has really eased my, my way in here. And I do want to say, um, the city staff and our, um, city attorney, uh, Stephen Lucas and, um, Nicole Bolden have been phenomenal as well. So shout out to them.
Yes, I, I second that shout out, and... Well, you know, no, I'm, I'm glad that the other councilors are valuing your voice, and I think, honestly, it's, it's important to have, uh, a voice that is a recent student, um, and, and a renter, um, because students make up, what, half the population of this town most of the year? Um, I mean, honestly, I'm just, you know, throwing stuff at the wall now, but I mean, I almost think that there should be an, like, a student representative on, like, reserved for all the council, or, or something to that effect.
Yeah, more, or more than one.
Yeah, well, no, it's, it's, yeah, it's a super important, um, perspective to have. Are, are you the only renter on the council?
Uh, I think so, but I don't want to speak for everyone's living situation, so I'm not sure I think so.
Yeah, and that's, I mean, this is a town, uh, a transient town, as you will. I mean, I don't know what the, the numbers are, you might know better than I am, but I mean, that, I, I would guess that a town like Bloomington has a way, uh, different renter-to-owner ratio than most cities this size, right? Um, and, and so it is, it's an entirely different, uh, situation, you know?
Yeah. I do want to say just about like the student representation. I am working on a bill that will reserve, um, a seat on every board and commission that's not like state, or not, not every, but most of them, the ones that specifically are students, um, that will reserve a seat for students on most, if not all of the, um, boards and commissions that are not, you know, ordained by the state. We can't supersede state code, wish we could, but I'm trying.
Well, but no, but that's, that's, that's great, and it's neat that I just, it's kind of like, "Hey, we should do that," and you're like, "Yeah, no, I'm already on it."
Well, so, well, great minds think alike, don't we?
Uh, yeah, I guess. Um, oh, I, yes, thank you. I'd like, I, I would love to take credit for being a great mind. So, um, talk a little bit about your first, what, three months on the council now.
On the council.
What, what subcommittees are you, uh, working on? Like, what issues grabbing your attention? Um, you know, like, what's, what's the workload like? You know, how much homework you got?
Well, the most recent packet came out for city council on Wednesday, it is two hundred pages. Um, so about two hundred pages of reading a week. I do feel a little like a lost student, especially trying to read some stuff. I don't know what this means. Oh, I gotta call our lawyer. But, so there's the reading. There is, um, I'm on the Climate Action and Resiliency Committee for the city council itself. I am also on, um, the Downtown Bloomington Incorporated Board, which represents a lot of the downtown Bloomington businesses.
So, um, how are you, um, staying in touch with your constituents? Do you, uh, you know, get out, you having constituent meetings? Um, what's that, what's that outreach look like?
I've heard from other council members that constituent meetings are primarily composed of the same people at most other, at every constituent meeting, like, for different council members. Um, so I'm trying to do things slightly differently, and I have dropped the ball a little bit on my April event, but in early March, we did have a town hall specifically with service providers invited for, um, sort of better serving the unhoused communities in Bloomington. And I would like to continue to do monthly town halls on different topics, specifically act-based. Um, I, you know, I do think there is a time and place to complain. Personally, like, I don't see anything wrong with complaining, um, but I do want to complain in a productive way, where it's like, "Hey, this really doesn't seem to be working. Is there anything we can do?" Um, and so I would like to, I think it's a bit too late to do something with the university, but I would like to work with IUSG next year to do a town hall where students are specifically invited. Um, and once I manage to, once I feel more comfortable working two jobs simultaneously, I do want to get back into my social media and really advertising, like, "Hey..." my social media and really advertising, like, hey, please come. Like, please come talk to me, even if you like, don't want to come to a town hall. Like, I've met with everyone who's asked me to meet with them. If you, if like, for anyone who wants to me, talk about me, talk about my plans, talk about your plans, talk about how I can support you. Just reach out, I'm on Instagram, um, my council Instagram is, I think it's still Zulik for Council, I'm thinking about changing it. But it's currently Zulik for Council, you can also email me at um, sidney.zulik@bloomington.in.gov. Happy me with literally anybody in a public space.
Yes, um, you, you know, you said you want to hear about people's plans and tell them about your plans, like, uh, you know, what do you, what do you got up the sleeve? Like, you know, what's your, like, obviously you can't do it by yourself, but like, what's your, what's your like vision for your, your perm here? What's like one thing that you want to get done?
One thing, oh my gosh, one thing.
One, one big thing, what's your one big thing?
You know, my predecessor, Steve Boland, was very passionate about um, the public transportation east to west. Bus line? I'm a fan of that, I do just want to improve public transportation overall. For students in particular, I think that there are a whole host of other issues with the public transportation as a whole. But I have noticed that in those spaces, they are not talking about students at all and kind of other groups of people have several advocates. Um, and so like even at the transit summit, um, I had some students who are in other rooms at the summit text me and be like, I'm the only person talking about how to make it easier for students. And so I think just better integrating with IU for public transportation and making, just making it more accessible. I would say that ties into my goal and it's not policy related, but it is very important to me. I have a goal of integrating student life with city life and making sure that students do feel like they're a part of the city, that they feel like they do get to vote in city elections because they are residents of the city and that they feel like they can advocate for themselves at a city level. Um, there's a lot of people who see students, um, and this isn't a term that I came up with, it's something that I've heard other people say, that students are treated like second class citizens here because they're not here year round and they're not here for more than four years. For me, I see that less as like a, oh, well, they're not like real people, they shouldn't vote here. I see that as like a challenge, which is like, why are they not staying? Like, why do we only have like this? Why are students leaving? And I can tell you, because I lived here, I've lived here since graduation. It took me eight months to find a job, I graduated summa cum laude and I was without a doubt going to be an elected official. And you know, like I have, I had internships for multiple fields when I was in college. I've done research, um, I did everything right in college. And it took me eight months to find a job. You know, this is an accessibility issue because people are forced to stay. You know, I had a very unique set of circumstances and thankfully, my parents taught me how to be financially savvy and my apartment is pretty inexpensive compared to a lot of other apartments in Bloomington. For all of those reasons, I was able to survive for eight months, no job. There are, the majority of students, I would say, do not have that luxury.
Right.
Especially with a degree, most of, I don't know if most of, a lot of people's parents, I think are kind of like, alright, you got your bachelor's degree, I paid for it, you are on your own, goodbye. Love you, please come home for Christmas, um, but we're not in your life anymore. And so why is that? No jobs. Super difficult to get even entry level jobs. And the wages don't match the rent.
Yeah, is, I mean, it's just, this is a simple like supply demand thing, it's like, you know, hey, every year, I'm sure there's probably lots of students who would like to stay in Bloomington, right? I mean, it's, it's a great town. I mean, I came here for school and basically never left, so um, but, but yeah, you're right, um. You've got this huge pool of highly educated people, all competing for the same, you know, few jobs. And uh, yeah, housing is incredibly expensive.
Yeah, and we are hemorrhaging talent because of it. Look at all the schools that are top 10 in the country, you wouldn't look at IU and think, oh, this, this is a public school that has very high rated schools across the university. But we do, we have the Hamilton Luger School, which is top 10 for international studies and global policy. The Kelly School of Business, the Jacob School of Music, the Political Science Department are all like renowned nationally. We are losing people, like we are losing some of like the most talented people I've ever met in my life. Because there's no place for them to go.
Yeah, and is this, um, I mean, is this a Bloomington problem specifically? Or, or is it like an Indiana problem? Because uh, you know, you leave the city of Bloomington and you're in Alabama.
Well, that, that's a different question. I think if Bloomington was more affordable and there were different industries to work in. I think it's a, it's a two-pronged problem. One, um, at the state house, you have a bunch of Republicans who know that, like, there's a recent article that just came out that Gen Z, my generation, is more likely to be queer than they are to be Republican. Right, Republicans know that. And they don't want to create an Indiana where young people want to stay, they want control of the state. So enough young people either have to love the city that they live in so much that they're willing to give up the fact that we don't have access to abortion. That, you know, for a lot of young people, that weed isn't legal. There, now, Kerry Thompson has said, Mayor Kerry Thompson has said that, you know, the police department is not really arresting anyone for possession of weed, marijuana, if you will. But still, like that's not really a place where a lot of people want to live. Not to mention a city that looks down at college students like they don't know anything. So like, there are things that we can fix at a city level that would make people want to stay. I mean, look at Florida. Florida has all these amazing cities, we are like, the state government is, let's just say they have room for improvement, a lot of it. But like, plenty of people want to live in Florida, right? Like, just because.
That's just the weather, right?
Well.
And the lack of state income tax.
That part. Um, but no, there, I think there are plenty of places people want to stay if the city's good enough. You know, and like, we can be that city. Yes, Indiana is the Texas of the Midwest. But our city can be better. And you know, I have some friends who are working to elect more Democrats to the state house, so hopefully, our state can be better as well.
Yes, yes, I, I, I think we're, I, 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 I think we're maybe finally starting to move in the right direction. So stepping outside, yeah, going out, stepping outside of Bloomington a little bit. You, you mentioned you have a second job and you um, are a regional campaign manager for uh, Dr. Tim Peck, who's running for Congress here in the ninth district. I know you can't talk about all that like in your capacity as a city council person, but just like, how do you keep it all separate? Yeah, you're obviously far better organized than I am.
Um, it's difficult, one, one of the things that I really, really like about my computer is that it has a separate Google button for individual emails. And so when I have like one um, Google page open, I know that I'm logged into my Tim Peck for Congress account. And when I have like, so my Tim Peck for Congress account is orange, um, my city council account is purple. And I know that if purple, I'm an elected official. If orange, I'm an employee. But I, I have received several emails from voters asking me campaign questions related to Tim Peck on my city council email and I have to be very, very careful. I email them back and I say, this is my city council email. I would prefer to keep these things completely separate, I've CC'd my Tim Peck email, I will respond to you there. And then I kind of just delete the city council email when I respond to it. And I think it's really important to keep those two things separate. Obviously, there are connections that I have on city council that I think it's, it's okay to introduce Tim to. But there are times where I kind of have to sit there and be like, this is not something that I can do in my capacity as city council. And you know, my counterparts are also on city councils in their respective areas. And so we are all kind of like, you know, Dr. Peck, Tim wanted a team of young people who are very good at what they do. And he has that team. But the cost of that is there are some times where I have to say, I cannot do this. Or there are times where I have to leave early because I have to drive two hours to get back to Bloomington for a city council meeting.
Yeah.
Some long days, it's definitely difficult. Wednesday was particularly difficult as I started work at about 8:30 in the morning and city council ended at 12:30, also in the morning. So I got home at 1:00.
That is, that is a long day.
Yes, I did kind of, you know, thankfully this weekend is Easter and since I am not Christian, I really got to just, you know, and I didn't do nothing today. I obviously did some work for Tim, I did some relaxing myself, I went to go get coffee with some friends that are tangentially related to politics. And my parents are coming to visit this weekend, so a nice reset from Wednesday.
Yes, good timing then for that, eh?
Well, next Wednesday will be just as bad, so.
So, um, I guess, so I don't mix those two things anymore, let's step back away from that and just, and talk about like your generation in general. You know, I'm, I'm a, I'm a old guy. What uh, old, old, old enough, old, old compared to you. So what, what is, what's motivating your generation? Like, uh, what is it going to take to get um, young voters out to the polls in big numbers in November? And um, what can fogies like me uh, learn from you kids? And uh, you know, what, what old ideas are worth keeping?
Yeah, definitely. So I want to say, before I say what I'm about to say, I will be voting for Joe Biden in November. I think the other option is deplorable. But if the Democratic Party wanted young people to come out and vote, they wouldn't have put an old man against an old man. Like, at the end of the day, and, and I don't, I, I genuinely don't know if this is, has been the case for previous generations. I think this is the first time where us as young people, in a similar way that like, you know, for me being a Jewish woman, I don't see a lot of people who are like me in office. Now, that's not to say that there are no elected Jewish elected officials, but there's not a lot. And I'm sure a lot of other minorities feel that in a more strong sense, because at the end of the day, I'm Jewish, but I'm also still white, so there are a lot of people who look like me. In ish, in places of authority in this country. And so I, I'm starkly aware that it's, it's a lot worse for other people. But I think this is kind of the first time that I've noticed that young people are like, there are no people who look like us in Congress, in like a in a generation, in a generational sense. So I think like, that's why I love Maxwell Frost so much, because he is the only person who I'm like, that guy is just like me. And like, it really only takes one issue, like it really just takes one issue that you care about, I think, to be like, okay, I'm, I'm in this now. Please welcome me to the team. But I, I think I don't know, it's something that we've really been struggling with. For me personally, I'd love to see Monroe County have an 80% turnout, in 2020, it had 67. I think we need more inspiring candidates. Like, look at the ballot. Is there anyone apart from Dr. Tim Peck that like, you're like really, really excited to vote for?
Yeah, especially the, the, the further you go up the, the ticket, you know? I think grassroots Democrats are, are doing a pretty good job with not a lot of support.
Yeah, really.
The national party makes it harder almost by doing dumb shit, if I may.
You, you may. And I may also. Yeah, like Biden isn't paying anyone to be in Indiana. The Democratic Party could not be more clear that they are giving up on our state, with the exception of Frank Marvans race. Look, I worked on Penny Giffens race in House District 62 in 2022. She was the closest race in the state, she was our best shot at flipping the super majority. Emily's List wouldn't give us any money. We got no attention from any Democratic Party organization outside of state. People feel abandoned. Bloomington should not have to feel like it is the only democratic stronghold in Southern Indiana. Especially when we got wins across the state, like young Democrats got wins across the state. I think the best way to get young people motivated is for every single elected official under 30 to be like, let's go. Like, we have to do this. Like Brandon Saqban in Terre Haute, um, Evan Stoner, who's a close friend of mine in Jeffersonville, Dylan Little, one of my coworkers, also a close friend of mine in Lawrenceburg, like, we, like, me being on city council is cool. Like, but once I got through the caucus, like it was pretty much like, yeah, she's going to be on city council. Like those, and, and Nick Roberts in Indiana, I'm sure there's plenty of other people, young people running for office and who ran for office and won last year. But like, they worked their asses off to get those seats. I think Mayor Saqban overthrew somebody to get his mayoral election. Like, those are people who know how to campaign and like, it's like, it's so nice to know that we have people. Not that many women, I'd like to work on that. But we have people across the state who really, really know how to get shit done. Um, and I think that we have to focus on that. And we have to talk to each other. And just like this, like, it can't just be for our election, like we can't just go talk to people for our own election, it has to be. I, I saw recently someone, and I'm not going to call out, but someone posted that being a Democrat is not a team sport. Yes, it absolutely is. Yes, it absolutely is. People up the ballot should be working just as hard as people on the ground. People who are in county races, people who are in city races, because not only are the people in county and state house races going to boost your turnout, you're going to boost theirs and like, it's like this symbiotic relationship where it's like, we are working together. If you ran on the Democratic ticket, you are now a part of the team, you are a part of the family, get over it. If you didn't like it, you should have run as an independent, you are a part of this team now, act like it. If you didn't like it, you should have run as an independent. You are a part of this team now. Act like it. Even people, for people running on a post.
Yeah, so besides, I guess, the current, the current crop of leadership nationally and, you know, statewide, all, you know, Democrats up and down. Besides, um, I guess, being ready to turn over the reins, which is a hurdle to get over in, in and of itself, uh, what should the current generation of leaders be doing to bring your generation into the fold and set up the, you know, the, the city, the county, the, the, you know, the, the country for, for success?
Find a protege. Find a protege under thirty. And just saying, so, um, yesterday, I think it was yesterday, I was at the Women's Luncheon. And Mayor Kerry Thompson spoke, and one of, I think, the most important things that she said was, you know, it was about women, but I think it extends to young people too. Um, as like a country for, like, the women do not raise their hands nearly as much as we should for leadership positions, for positions that will put us in places of power. Um, and so she actually put out a challenge to all the women in the room, especially women who are in positions of power, whether it be like nonprofits or elected officials or people in like the health sciences, anything. Find a woman and tell, like, tell her that you have her back and that you think that she's ready to raise her hand. Um, and so I think that for, you know, Gen X and Boomers and and I don't mean the word Boomers in like a negative term, just in like a, that's the generation. Um, and, and Millennials, to find someone in Gen Z and say, you are so competent, you know what you're doing. And for the things that you don't know about, like, you will learn along the way. It's your time. Um, one of the other things that I think was really eye-opening for me, and I've repeated this like eight times in the past two weeks since hearing it. My mom actually was telling me about this. I don't know who it is, but there was a Congresswoman who said, um, I spent the first six months of my term wondering how the hell I got here and the rest of my term, wondering how the hell everyone else did.
Great, that's a great quote, yeah.
So it's like, you get into these spaces and you're like, nobody is as smart as I thought they were or as they thought that they think that they are. Um, and so, and that's, that's not even meant to be an insult. It's just kind of like a look, if we're all just people and the way that you get there is by doing it. And it doesn't matter if you're, the only thing that matters is if you're old enough to run for that specific office. That's it. I don't care about anything else. People are like, oh, you're not, um, I've heard a couple people be like, oh, students aren't qualified to run for city council. Why not? Legally, they are. What makes you qualified? A drive to serve. And if they, let's just be clear, I get paid twenty grand to be on city council a year. Twenty thousand dollars to be on-call twenty-four-seven and like be a public figure. This is not Congress. Like, to some extent, there is like an ego thing, but nobody is doing this unless like they really want to serve their community. Now, we all have different opinions, but come on. Like, if you are willing to get up and run, you absolutely have what it takes to be on city council. That's the only qualification. That you're eighteen and that you want to. And good luck to you, because it's kind of hard.
And, and I'm gonna repeat that for, for everybody who's listening, you know, if there is a a, a young person in your life who is passionate about these things, or if, you know, if you're, or if you're that person who's passionate about these things and you just like wish your community or your state could be better and you look around and you're saying, God, why won't somebody like do something? Why won't somebody stand up? Like, Tag, it's you. You know, you're it.
Yeah. Um, and you know, if you don't know how to get started, I'm not gonna give my phone number on this podcast because I don't really want to make it public-public. Send me an email. I'll give you my phone number. We'll go get coffee and I will tell you all about how we're taking over the world. And it's a we. It is us.
Yeah, none too soon. So, um, Sydney, if um, people do want to do that, if they want to contact you one more time, how can um, your constituents or um, you know, just inspired uh, youth of America get ahold of you?
Yes. So my email is uh, Sydney, and that's S Y D N E Y dot uh, zulich, which is Z U L I C H at bloomington.in.gov. I would love to hear from you. Um, I get a lot of emails and I don't really like to read them all. I love to get emails from like constituents and just literally anyone who like wants to talk. Um, I don't always like to read an email, but I do like to go talk to people, so.
All right, well, very good. Sydney Zulich, thank you so much for joining the Who's Left Podcast. I appreciate it.
Thanks for having me.
Once again, that was Bloomington City Councilwoman for District Six, Sydney Zulich. In a year when the political headlines are dominated by a presidential race between an eighty-one-year-old incumbent and an obese, possibly dementia-addled, soon-to-be-seventy-eight-year-old, it is important to point out that this is not normal. Joe Biden is already the oldest president to hold the office. The median age of Congress has been climbing consistently since nineteen eighty, peaking with the class of twenty-twenty-one before ticking down ever so slightly with the current crop of legislators. From five thirty-eight, quote, "Across all senators and representatives, the median age of the one hundred and eighteenth Congress is fifty-nine years old. The median senator is sixty-five years old, a record high. The median representative is about fifty-eight, for the fourth Congress in a row. Congress has notably aged since two thousand and one. From nineteen nineteen to nineteen ninety-nine, the median senator never eclipsed sixty years old and the median representative never passed fifty-five point two," end quote. This trend is not limited to the upper echelons of government as state and local elected officials also tend to be significantly older than the communities they represent. Continuing from that five thirty-eight piece, quote, "No group is more responsible for this trajectory than the baby boomer generation. While immigration has augmented the population, seventy-six million Boomers were born between nineteen forty-six and nineteen sixty-four, far more than the forty-seven million in the preceding Silent Generation and greater than the fifty-five million and sixty-two million in the subsequent generations of Generation X and Millennials respectively. Boomers have been described as, quote, 'the pig in the python,' end quote, because over time, they have formed an unusually large bulge in the nation's population distribution," end quote. Though Millennials past Boomers as the largest generation in twenty nineteen, they only make up ten percent of Congress. With such discrepancy between the population and their leaders, we see skewed priorities in governance. Our geriatric political class is far more likely to be attuned to the concerns of their own generation than the issues of importance to younger Americans like LGBTQ rights, climate change, and home affordability. And now, the oldest member, uh, members of Gen Z are coming of age and running for office themselves. The first congressman of that generation winning a seat in twenty twenty-two, Maxwell Frost, who Sydney mentioned. That means we've got a logjam of new ideas, new energy, and new leadership backed up, waiting for the python to pass that pig. Turns out, that gem of a quote she brought up, quote, "For the first six months, you wonder how the hell you ever got here. For the next six months, you wonder how the hell the rest of them ever got here," end quote, that came from Harry Truman. And he made a damn good point. The elders occupying positions of power aren't special. They're fallible people just like the rest of us. Hell. Most of them got where they are because of who they know, not what they know. Now, sure, with their age and experience, there are some things they know that younger generations don't, but there's plenty the young'uns know that the old folks can't even begin to comprehend, like the difference between TikTok and TicTacs. It's long past time for the gerontocracy to go. If there's a whole crop of Sydney Zulichs ready to step into leadership roles over the coming years, we might be okay after all. The kids are all right. Let them take the wheel. Thanks for listening. Follow me on Facebook, Blue Sky, YouTube, and TikTok at Who's Left and on most other social media sites at ScottRog78. If you want to reach me, send me a DM on the socials or email me at scottroge78@gmail.com. Please, please subscribe at the paid level over on scottaironrogers.substack.com. Until next time, this has been the Who's Left Podcast. I'm Scott Aaron Rodgers. Love each other, Indiana.